Okay, well, we'll call the meeting to order now. I just want to make sure we have a quorum, so I'm just going to read each town. And if you're here, just say here, please. Abington?
Here.
Cohasset? Hanover?
Yeah.
Norwell?
Here.
Rockland?
Here.
Situit?
Yeah.
And Whitman?
Here.
Thank you. And if anybody wants to make a motion or second or discussion or anything, just please just say what town you're from when you're coming in, if you would. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda adjustments. We have no adjustments tonight. Now we'll go for public hearing. I want to take the motion to suspend the regular meeting and open up the public hearing on school choice for 2020 to 2021.
Make the motion. Whit- Whit- hi, sorry, second.
Abington's second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. The public hearing is now open. Are there any comments from the public or from the committee?
Hanover has a motion.
Okay.
Second, Rockland.
Last motion. We've got to make the motion to close first, I believe.
No, I have to read the motion.
Okay.
I moved that the Hanover so- that I moved that the South Shore Regional School District not participate in the school choice program for the school year 2020 and 2021 because the school district has an established process for admitting students who reside outside the school district.
Second by Whitman.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Rockland has a question. Rockland?
Okay.
By not allowing now, you say if we had a staff member that lived outside of the district, you wanted this child to come to the school, does that eliminate that?
Mr. Chairman, that could possibly fall, Bob, under the non-resident policy that we already have, so we would be covered.
Okay, just double checking, that's all.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? All right, motion carries. Now last for a motion to close public hearing and return to regular meeting.
Make a motion to cancel the public hearing.
Second by Whitman.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the minutes. I ask for a motion to approve the April- April 20 minutes.
Motion by Situit.
Second by Abington.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to staff recognition, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Aubrey.
Thank you, Chairman. We have a number of staff members with us tonight, and I'm going to go with the theme of support. In this time, in the last couple of months, we've seen Americans stand up and support our fellow countrymen, and I think that goes no less than any of the people that we have on the call today. So first, I'd like to bring highlight to Mr. Jerry Shaw, who is an engineering instructor at the school, Ms. Lisa Bellantoni, who is a paraprofessional, and Mr. Bello, who is an all-around community liaison person. They haven't been given up their home time to come into school to make PPE. And Jerry, correct me, 3,000 as of today, correct? 3,000 face shields they created as of today. Now, they are winding down, but we've been able to supply these on the backs of these people. Just incredible, incredible giving back to our community to all over the South Shore, from our fire departments to hospitals to just name it. And we've been able to give and give and give, and it's been great. And we just need to acknowledge their efforts and the time they've given up and their expertise. In fact, at one point, they needed to move their little store across the hall because we were doing floors, so they had to rip everything down and move it across the hall and build it again. So just an acknowledgement for everything that they have done for the district and everything they've done for our whole South Shore community is just fabulous. I can't say enough about them.
Great job, great job. Yep.
It's exactly right. Mr. Salucci, you're very right. Next, I want to bring up Rachel Haynes. She's a paraprofessional and a support staff member. And what we say support, she supports everybody in the building. During remote learning, she is in teachers' classrooms. She's working with students in small group hangouts. She has gone as far as to copy work and mail it to the students so that they have the work they need to do to complete their work. We're talking about someone who's gone above and beyond for our students and our staff. As you folks know, we've been working on improving our attendance throughout the year. Rachel is the clerical spreadsheet guru behind all that. She's the one who keeps us up to date. She tells us who's what, and she's making phone calls. She really does do it all for us. And so when you think of support and you think of supporting the South Shore community, really, it's Rachel. And putting a face to that name is just incredible. She's done a fabulous job for us over the entire few years that she's been here, but especially over this school year, she's been great. Finally, Mr. Zaherk, who is one of our guidance counselors, he's waving to you. Todd has been fabulous during remote learning. He is in every PLC, which is a meeting with all the staff of the different departments. He's talking about kids. He's taking information from the teachers. He's really the conduit between the families, the students, and the teacher. And he's doing a great job. He has a very, very difficult job. He's never going to make anybody, he's never going to make everybody happy, but that's not his job. His job is to do what's best for the kid, and he understands that. He's also been helpful, as we know, we were working on improving our breakfast numbers and nutritional numbers. And Todd has also been great developing surveys, working with me on that, and implementing those surveys, too. So when we think about support, these are the people we rely on. This is the time that we need them, and they've stepped up and they've done a fabulous job for everybody in South Shore. I just acknowledge all of them, guys. Fabulous work across the board. Thank you, everybody, I really do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Aubrey, and thank you to everybody, all those staff members and all the staff members of the school. All right, next we'll move on to the student advisory, and we'll hear from Emily.
All right, I'm going to, before Emily starts, Emily, like a lot of our students, has had a lot of things taken away from her because of COVID-19. And in this case, she's lost the opportunity to be in front of you and talk about all the great things the kids are doing. So I just want to, Emily is from Whitman, right, Emily?
Yes.
Yeah, and I just want to acknowledge her efforts. Emily, you will get the plaque that goes in front of you. I will get it to you.
I was going to ask you.
I will get it to you when we give you back, when you give your cap and gowns and stuff. I'll give you the student body president, student reps, little thing, okay?
Fabulous.
Emily, take it away. I thank you. You've been a great student and a great champion of vocational education for the last four years, and we won't miss you. Really, we will.
Congratulations, Emily.
Thank you. So it has been quite the year, and who would have guessed that this is the way we'd be ending it? While remote learning has been tough for myself and other students, I've managed to organize my work and get the best out of the academic side. It is quite a challenge every day to get everything done, but the staff here is super supportive and very helpful with everything that anybody needs. Today, graduation was actually scheduled for the 27th of June at 10:00 a.m., which was very good news. Everybody was very happy. A bunch of emails, a bunch of text messages, everybody's very thrilled. But the question of prom is still in the air, and people still ask me about it frequently. So people want to know whether or not this is happening and whether or not they should look forward to it or if they should process the loss of it already. That's all I really got for student things, and I have what I'm going to do, if anybody's curious. I'm planning on going to college next year, and I'm either going to do a Massa Sawyer transfer to Bridgewater or just going to Bridgewater State University. But I plan to major in management and marketing. That's all I've got so far. Thank you for the opportunity for letting me represent the student body and activities throughout the year during these school committees. I hope everybody remains in good health, and we'll try to take it.
You, too. Congratulations.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, Mr. Filano and I will be in touch about the prom probably in about two weeks.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
First week in June, I'll be able to give everybody two months' notice.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. It's been a pleasure having you on.
Thank you so much.
And good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, now we'll move on to the treasures report, and I'll hand it over to you, Jim. Is Jim with us tonight?
Yes, he is, Mr. Chairman. He's muted at the moment. If he's having technical, if he's having some technical difficulties, we can, we could look back to him.
Want to just come back to it?
Are you there now?
I think he's on now, yeah.
Okay, great. You there, Jim?
I've just, I've decided to not use the camera tonight since I haven't had a haircut in about 12 weeks. So, treasures report in front of you, ladies and gentlemen. Everything's looking well. Again, on the front page of the treasures report, if I had a camera, I'd show you. But we have Mr. Bello, Lisa, and Jerry Shaw on the cover this month. So this will be forever ingrained in the history of the school as these reports go in a file in there. They're here forever and ever and ever. So you guys will always be recognized on the cover of the April 2020 report. Page one is our financial summary, cash balances as of April 30th. Again, everything's going well. Little over $6 million in all of our accounts spread around the South Shore. Again, strong. We just did the billing for the final assessment for all of our towns, and the money is flowing in here in May. So again, we're strong financially as far as the cash position. And as far as the OPEB reserve, we did do this month's, this fiscal year's transfer from the budget into the OPEB account. So we have about $758,000 currently in the OPEB account.
Wow.
Page two, page two has our revenues for this month. We have, we did get checks from Cohasset and Whitman early from the May 1st billing. So therefore, they have been received. We also have our regular chapter 78 that came through. When we, on the report, we also did the transfer for our non-resident tuitions overall. You know, revenue is on target. The bottom part of the page shows the out-of-district tuition. Everybody has paid their second piece of out-of-district tuition, except for Waymouth. Waymouth is always, they always have us sign five or six pieces of paper every time before they send over a payment. So we're, we're still waiting on the second payment from Waymouth. And the final page is the expenditures during the course of April. Again, kind of light, as you would expect based upon the situation. Total of a little over $1 million. We did do a, you know, the largest portion of that is also the payroll for $640,000. Again, not a lot of other, you know, variable expenses that came through based upon the school running, mainly just our fixed expenses, overhead, utilities, health insurance, and so forth. We also did make the transfer this past month for the $230,000 for our capital outlay at the bottom of the page. And that was the budget component of transferring funds into the stabilization account. So that $230,000 has been moved into the stabilization account for this fiscal year. So overall, everything is going well as, as expected for the treasures report. So that is all.
Thanks, Jim. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion. Rockland makes a motion.
Second by Whitman.
Second by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carries. Didn't we have anything else? Oh, budget transfer?
No, no budget transfers this month.
Oh, none?
Did want to update the committee on a couple of other things. We did through virtual emails and so forth with the Commonwealth of Mass, the Department of Revenue. We did have our excess and deficiency certified this past month. Martin is our DOR contact that normally comes out and, you know, he insists on coming out because I guess the, what's the place, the breakfast place down the street in the red building there? That, that has a great lobster roll. So he forces to come out here because he goes there for lunch for a lobster roll, but I guess he can't get his lobster roll, so he's got to, we did everything through email. So we did have our E and D certified. The amount of that is $545,140, which is below the cap, as you are aware. We can have up to 5% of our budget in our E and D. So we are below that threshold by about $90,000. So we've got, we've got wiggle room within the E and D. And that might come up as a discussion for Tom later on as we talk about the 2021 budget. So that's going well. Janine and Tricia are doing yeoman's work. They're working remotely every day, keeping up to date on things. They're attending software seminars and webinars. Tricia's in the process of rolling all of the 2021 salaries into the, into the system with all the upgrades and the movements of the columns and so forth. Janine is going through her first closing process here for the end of the year. So we're cleaning up all of our encumbrances and doing some investigations to some other accounts and so forth. So everything's going well from that standpoint. And Tom and I are back and forth. We're working on the scrubbing down the numbers for the fiscal 2020 budget to find out what our possible savings are, you know, that we'll be bringing to the, to the committee at future meetings as far as how many spend down. But it looks as though we will probably have a surplus based upon some identified savings throughout the budgets. And again, those details will come forward in future meetings. And that's about it.
For the record, it's the eating establishment down the corner.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, thank you, Jim. Chairman, there's nothing from the chairman tonight. We have no subcommittee reports, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Director, Mr. Hittie.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, guests, thanks for, for coming on tonight. A lot to celebrate certainly in this, in this difficult time. I'll, I'll be brief with my comments as you've been staying in regular contact. In terms of school events, some of which you already heard from Emily, where we have our graduations slated for June 27th. I'll keep you posted if, we're hoping the music circus will be the venue, and we'll prepare as normal a graduation as possible for students. Other school events, there will be an online recognition of our senior class on, on June 5th, and we'll send, make sure we send you some information. And administrators, and Amy Dow, our recruitment counselor, working very hard on also welcoming our rising ninth-grade students who we want to welcome into our, our school community in a rather unique, remote, virtual way. And that's going to be happening a little bit later this month as we begin to provide them with the same quality information. Administrators are spending a lot of time on the closeout of the school year. June 12th is the last official day, and they're working very hard, along with our faculty and support staff, to put all students on, on a path to success. And we'll have some plans in place for students who, who might need a little more time after the year is over. But I'm confident that they've created a good environment for kids to be successful and, while at the same time, taking into account all the, all the hardships that students are, are facing at the moment. Before I, before I pivot off of our school events, Mark or Sandy, is there, is there anything else specific you'd like to update on? Or did I, did I hit most of the categories?
I think there are a couple of things that I'd like to showcase, if you don't mind.
Sure.
First of all, I actually got a little emotional when Mark was giving his talk about our faculty because of their really amazing ability to pivot and make use of strong will and strong skills to create a new normal for our kids. They all work together under the school leadership, but they work together to create a safe, regular, routine, and rigorous place for our kids, and they should be very proud of the work that they've done. So a great thanks to them, so thank you. A couple of other highlights, I really wanted to showcase our paraprofessionals tonight. They have been extraordinary in supporting our teachers and have done an amazing job supporting students specifically. They've all been, have a caseload that they reach out to quite regularly, and we can feel confident that we've had communication, at least from our end, with 100% of our student body. And I feel very confident that through the work of all teachers, counselors, and through the support of the Paris, that we have a very good handle on what's happening with 100% of our student population. So a great part of that thanks goes to our Paris for filling some gaps for us. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention something you've probably already seen on Facebook, and that's with the culinary arts department, who opened up their refrigerator and realized, oh, my gosh, there is so much in here that is great now but won't be in September. What are we going to do with it? Let's find a good home for it. And they were able to provide over 500 meals in the last week to the town of Abington through their senior center, the council on aging in Norwell, and through the Boys and Girls Club in Marshfield. So they, they served over 500 meals in the last week. So a real congratulations should go out to them as well. Look for them on Facebook, and I'm working on something to get out to the media as well in your, in your local papers. And finally, the heart and soul of our school is, is our students. But without teachers, they wouldn't be learning much. And our educators have been fantastic. They have done a great job overcoming some skill deficits in a very short period of time. So from March 18th until beginning of real remote learning in early April, they learned how to screencast, they learned EdPuzzles, they learned Google Classroom in a way they never had before, and really created a very regular, routine, consistent resource for our students that's going to go a long way during this, this pandemic, but, and beyond. Particularly, a shout out to teachers who brought in industry experts to do, to share in their Google Classroom platform and do lessons from industry. A shout out to Sean Hennessy, who has an underground garage where he's doing real live auto work in his garage and sharing it and structuring with his students. And then a shout out to our academic teachers who are, are, are teaching hundreds of kids every week and, and reading hundreds of emails every day to Sora students. And really proud of them and grateful for the opportunity to work with them. And that's it.
Sounds great. Sandy, I have one question of you.
Here.
Did you get me?
Sure thing, Bob.
I hear you.
How did our transition go from functional learning to our online learning? Did we have any problems with instructors or anything? You know, I've done a lot of reading on some of the other school systems, and how did ours go?
I don't like to brag, but, but in every regional meeting that we were in as administrators and learning about what other schools were doing, I was not, I wasn't often getting good ideas, but giving good ideas based on what we'd experienced here. So they, they're doing great.
Okay. I was just concerned that, like, the school districts had problems that they were, you know, they wanted extra and they wanted this and that. So I was just hoping ours went well.
Yeah, I, I would say they're definitely, you know, they're definitely building the plane while it's in flight and doing quite a good job. And they've been flexible. Our, our parents have been allies in this as well. You know, it really is about, it's really about a mix of old-school communication and outreach, which is what you heard with, you know, with Rachel and with Todd earlier, combined with the latest technology in, in an attempt to reach kids. So I think we got the, we definitely had the right mix, and our families are responding.
And did we have enough laptops and iPads for them all?
Yes. We, we ended up, because as you can imagine, under normal circumstances, if a family has one functioning computer at home, they would, the, the capacity would be fine. But when you have multiple people needing devices, we ended, we loaned out about 150 devices, and we, we were well within our capacity to do so. And it's, it's my, I'll pivot slightly on, on this just because you're all familiar with the federal legislation. But we are going to be the recipient of some Federal Cares Act money. One of the, one of the obvious categories, and it's the priority category that I'll be writing for, for the funding, will be for additional devices. So we will, we'll have plenty of infrastructure to support all of our kids. Our graduating seniors will return devices, and we will, we will have devices for our brand-new students as well. Depending on what things look like, we'll be ready.
That's great. Yeah, I hope that, what do they call it, CARE money or something like that?
Yeah, the CARE, exactly, Cares Act. School districts are getting a percentage of what they got for federal Title I money. So in our world, that means about, that's about $60,000. And so my intention is that we will, we would target technology infrastructure with those funds.
Yeah, I know, my son, well, you know him, he got 1.3.
We'll, we'll stretch our 60.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks for the, thanks for the question, and thanks, Sandy.
Tom, on that, on that extension there, Tom, are we eliminating iPads and going to Chromebooks?
Yeah, I, yes, Bob. iPads have not been a, have not been a device that we've invested heavily in in recent years. Chromebook is the, Chromebook is really the, the standard that we're using, yeah.
Great, okay.
Regarding, regarding just other COVID-related updates in terms of school and how we're functioning, our custodial crew is back. They're all working, they're working a 723 shift. And Bob Morehead has a very good, a very good plan on how they're being deployed safely with PPE. And quite honestly, using this rather odd time to get a jumpstart on, on projects that we have inside the building. We do also have two outside contractors working at the building right now. One company is continuing their work on the security doors project. So if you were to swing by school, if you needed to get out of the house and you were to swing by school just looking at the perimeter of the school, you'd see one company working on installing exterior doors. These will be doors that'll have swipe card technology for us in the fall. And you would also see a company working as they trench from the street around the back of our library parking lot for our athletic field, our athletic, the lights on the athletic field project. That project has about a three-week timeframe as well. So it is, we've got good systems in place when we have a shutdown. Nobody planned for this kind of a shutdown. So internally and externally, that's working well. Our remote, our office staff will continue to work remotely. We will follow the governor's guidance and, and work on documentation to quote "self-certify" in terms of what we need to do should we need office staff to come in intermittently. But they're doing quite a good job working remotely, and for the time being, that would, you know, that would stay, stay the same. Where, as you can imagine, this conversation ranges from what are we doing next week to what are we doing in September? And we're, we're having all sorts of conversations in between. We obviously will, we'll hear more this summer from the Department of Education about what school looks like reopening. But one thing we know for sure is that we're going to need to have a sufficient supply of PPE for our staff and students. And so we're working right now, we're, we're having early communications with our school nurse and cafeteria facilities to look at procurements so that we can begin the process of planning that out. There are a lot of other variables involved, of course, and I think that, I think that we're, we're going to be well-positioned. Our, you know, I, I would look forward to comments as we get into June and July. But certainly, we only have to be a casual reader of the news to know that schools are going to be struggling with how, what, what this looks like. And certainly, schools like ours, make no mistake about it, hands-on learning has to happen in person. Anything else is, is the silver medal. And so when we work on a plan to bring our kids back into our building... into our building, we're really going to look to see how we can prioritize those programs, uh, that really need to have that hands-on component, especially in the heavy industry, manufacturing and transportation areas. We've got a good network of colleagues from other schools and will be sharing best practices. So rest assured, this is, this is just the beginning of the start of that conversation. And, uh, this might be the year, quite honestly, where I might, uh, be suggesting to the committee that we, whether it's remote or otherwise, uh, that, that we do actually have an August meeting, just as a check-in in a rather unusual set of circumstances. Uh, just so that we're, so that when we do have a rollout plan for September first, uh, we'd be able to talk about it and share it in more detail. But I feel very good about where we are right now, the plans we have. We're moving forward, uh, with regard to, uh, what we need to do to prepare, prepare for the next class and to prepare our building in the best way it can be. Uh, before I pivot to fiscal twenty-one budget comments, can I answer any questions at this point?
Yeah, Tom, I have a question, if I may. Are we keeping track so that if in fact there is some federal reimbursement for issues with dealing with the coronavirus, as far as fundness and whatever, for reimbursement?
Yes. All of the great work that, uh, that Lisa and Paul and Jerry did, uh, with our masks, they've been great at documentation. Uh, and that is something, I, I had some communication with our state representative, Dave DeCoste, as well as Plymouth County Commissioner, Dan Palata. Um, the technical language seems to talk about municipalities. Uh, and so I'm going to, I'm going to look into submitting paperwork, even though we're not technically a municipality. Uh, it's something that I will be submitting anyway, uh, looking to see if we can get some relief there. But I'd also say, Dan, that that CARES Act money I mentioned earlier, uh, that's also a possible source that we could use directly. So I am confident that we will have offset money for unexpected PPE expenses.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Sure. With, uh, with regard to the budget situation, as, uh, as Jim mentioned earlier, we'll definitely be back to you, uh, in, you know, for our June and even into our July and meeting regarding revenues from this year. I'll tell you, I'll tell you now that, um, I would anticipate at our June meeting having a, uh, having a request for a vote to transfer money into stabilization, which we've been able to do for the last couple of June meetings, uh, as well as having some money drop into the E and D account. And I will probably be bringing you recommendations, it should come as no surprise, that will target our long-range facilities plan, uh, so that we can continue to move ahead. You know that such a big part of our fiscal twenty-one budget had to do with a roof and window project, uh, as well. And there, and then there are others, of course, that we, we weren't able to request, uh, partial funding for. So I'm looking at those priorities now and should have a, uh, ambitious list of what we could use, uh, because I do not anticipate fiscal twenty-two to be, uh, a pleasant economic experience. And we, for, again, casual readers of the news are also bracing for what fiscal twenty-one will look like. And now I'll make some quick comments there. Every indication is that the governor's budget, the one that we based our assessments on and everything else is, um, is no longer a reality. And that the real numbers we're going to be looking at are the houseways and means numbers that'll come out probably in late June, maybe, you know, by July first. So we've generally been able to count on chapter seventy money not being less, but at this point, no one's even able to say that with confidence. Should we see a shortfall in revenue through chapter seventy, uh, that's a conversation I would bring back to this committee. And it, again, I think it's, it would just, for me, it would just be common sense that if we had to make some budget adjustments as a result of a drop in revenue, we would start by looking at capital items, uh, and stabilization transfers first, before we look at anything at all that has to do with direct instruction. So, uh, at this point, I, I would, it would be total conjecture, there are no, there are no numbers to deal with. What I can tell you, though, that we will be preparing for, because all of the advice Desi is giving regional schools, is that, uh, we will be submitting some paperwork once they come out with the template about us moving to what's called a one-twelfth budget. Uh, and the one-twelfth budget essentially means that if a regional school district does not have a certified budget by July first, uh, it then petitions the commissioner to set a budget number. Uh, being very, being overly simplistic, a one-twelfth budget would essentially be last year's budget number divided in twelve, and the district would have the authorization to spend, if you will, one-twelfth each month. Monies unspent roll forward. So as you can imagine, July and August are not heavy payroll months. Uh, those would be monies that would roll forward. Now, we will fill out the paperwork because we're being advised to do so, and that would happen in the next couple of weeks. This is submitting, Jim and I would submit, uh, financials from fiscal twenty that, that Desi would review. If, however, we are able to secure six affirmative votes before June thirtieth, then we would have an approved budget. Now, I know at least Hanson has delayed its town meeting to July twentieth. Some communities have their town meetings set for June, and some have not set them at all. So I am, I am not immediately concerned with, uh, with a one-twelfth budget, as it might take us through the summer. Uh, and let's hope that once we see the houseways and means number, then we can re, then we can reassess where we stand. That will give towns the ability to set town meetings and base their revenue numbers so that they can get their, they can enact their plans as well. So it'll, it will be a, it'll be a very unusual summer, uh, financially. Uh, I think, uh, I think the department is, is doing a good job trying to keep school officials, uh, informed as to how that process works. But for right now, I would say the process is closing out fiscal twenty, targeting surplus dollars to expenses we already know we need to take care of with our facilities plan. Work with our communities as they develop a town meeting schedule. See where we are going into the summer. If we're on a one-twelfth budget, we'll report revised financials to all of you. But the hope would be, of course, that that would resolve itself with only, going only a few months into the next fiscal year. It really depends, quite honestly, on when our community set our budget, uh, set their town meeting to review our budget assessments. And then we'll take it, and then we'll take it from there.
The, uh, most of the cities and towns in our district, uh, they're, uh, really concerned about, they're talking, you know, up to fifteen or seventeen percent cutbacks. So that's, that's what I'm concerned about, what they were going to, you know, tickle our bones with.
Uh, yes, just to respond, Bob, yes, that's, that's absolutely, that's absolutely something that if there's a trickle down, if, if they can't project the revenues, they can't fund the budgets. Uh, and, and that is something that even if our numbers for a community came in looking fine a few months ago, again, just like the governor's budget, uh, we're, you know, we, we would expect to have a renewed conversation with all of our communities to, you know, to, to see where they are. So, uh, it, it, they will, this, this will, this will not be a lull of a summer by any stretch. And, uh, we'll be prepared to, uh, to tackle it as we stay in touch with our communities. And then, and then perhaps, if we did have to revisit a budget, then that would be something this committee would be, we would bring our best recommendation to you for, uh, for revisiting the budget. As you monitor the situation in your own communities and we all stay in touch, uh, we will be able to put up the best plan in place that we can for fiscal twenty-one.
Yeah, Tom, if I might, uh, Whitman's annual town meeting will be the twenty-second of June.
Thank you. Thank you.
I suggest that maybe we, you, you get a hold of the rest, and you know about Hanson. They changed it last night. Uh, you might want to get a hold of the other six districts and find out exactly, uh, when they're holding their town meetings. So we'll know, in fact, uh, are they holding before July? And we won't, possibly won't have to worry about it.
Correct. That's right, Dan. At least, at least two have not said it. But, uh, yes, Susan is reaching out to all of the communities to see if, uh, for, for the ones we don't know about, to see what any updated dates will look like. And I will, uh, I will keep you informed of, of that as that moves forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tom. Um, unfinished business? We have no unfinished business tonight under new business. Um, I asked for a motion to approve the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school calendar.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Norwell.
Second hand over.
Second by Hanover. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may just jump in very briefly, um,
Absolutely.
September fourteenth, as you know, has been slated as a state holiday for the running of the Boston Marathon. However, I don't believe it technically at this moment. I, I think there's a legislative process that needs to go through. So on the calendar right now, it is listed as a day of no school. What I just want to point out to the committee without having to deal with it at the moment, is that if for some reason, uh, this day is, is not seen as a holiday, that would automatically trigger a day off from school, I would bring that back to you, uh, for, to revisit. But at this point, we're assuming that the intention is that for this one year, that would be, that would be a state holiday. That may be an adjustment, uh, that we would tackle in the next couple of months, should that not be the case.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Um, any more discussing?
I could use the support running that bit.
Well, we'll be there for you, Bob.
Well, I'll be there, Bob.
Yeah, great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Next, we'll move on to the surplus. I ask a motion to surplus the forklift.
Handover motion. Motion by Whitman.
The motion made by Hanover, second by Whitman.
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Um, do we have any warrants tonight?
Chris.
We do.
Chris, please go to warrants. Chris.
Yep.
I will do my, I will do my best Bob, um, Haywood voice in announcing warrants twenty-one, twenty-one A, twenty-two, twenty-two A, twenty-two B, and twenty-two C, for a total of one million, seventeen thousand, three hundred, twenty-eight dollars and fifty-seven.
Whitman second.
Second by.
Second by Whitman.
Any discussion? Whitman, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Thank you. Um, any requests for action?
I have one question, Chris, to Tom. Um, normally, uh, you mail out packages and we're, we're doing this online now. Um, I, I did not look on our website. Is tonight's package on our website?
Yes.
It, it was uploaded, Dan, yes.
Okay, all right. So then, that's my error. Because I'm, I wanted to have, wanted to see, you know, the, the reports that you were talking about. And I, and of course, Sue gave the adjut, the adjusted agenda, and that's what I have on my, my computer. And I'm going through my iPad as far as the Zoom meeting. So I should, I, my error, I should have gone to our website. Thank you.
Dan, it was a little awkward this time on, you know, on the resources. It wasn't as smooth as it usually is to get.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks, Danny. Um,
Chris?
Well, go ahead, Bob.
Chris, can I go back to business here? I just want to go back on, uh, one thing was Tom mentioned, and go by his recommendation is that we schedule, uh, an August meeting.
Yep.
Make that a motion.
Chris can make, schedule them anyway. He doesn't need a motion.
Uh, thanks for, I just wanted to make sure that it's, yeah. And the other thing is just.
So we only need a vote to, um, cancel the meeting, correct?
Correct. Okay.
Okay.
Double check in. And then the other thing I'd like to bring up is that, that, uh, we could go, there was a fantastic article, not that there's much in the sports section these days, but there was a great article pertaining to two of our coaches, the, the Doyle brothers. Uh, you guys can all go back and check that out in the archives of the Patriot Ledger. It was a nice article.
Was very good.
Yeah.
Hey.
They do a great job for us.
All right. Well, like, um, there's then nothing else. I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
So move by Abington.
Is that motion made by Whitman, second by Abington?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Well, thank you, everybody, for...